Good evening and welcome to the Lincolnville Select Board Meeting for September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five. We're immediately following our special town meeting. Uh, before we start, Robin, would you read the quote for the evening?
There's only one way to succeed in anything, and that is to give it everything. Vince Lombardi.
First item up as you, Citizens Forum, if there's anybody that has a non-agenda item they'd like to step up to talk about. Being none, we'll move on to the administrators report.
A couple of things, um, that's not on the agenda that we've accomplished or working towards. Uh, crack sailing, we've done the town office parking lot, the fire station and Calderwood Lane. Uh, you'll note on the Calderwood Lane that the monies for that is part of the warranty. For um, FC Works, so that money has been deducted from their payment. The cell, partial cell line crack uh, there. Uh, beach fire station has been stripped of its siding and trim, windows have been replaced. Uh, we've uncovered some minor rot that's been repaired. Um, the building's now wrapped and some of this trim and siding has commenced going back onto the building, the new siding. Um, can't even read my scribbles. Uh, just for board notice in public, uh, the swim floats at Briesmeier Park will probably come out of the water in the next week to ten days. And then the floats at the boat launching ramp will be early November, depending on the weather. But uh, we've got it scheduled for early November, so. Just so you know, uh, in case anybody's unaware, tax bills were mailed out. Uh, first half payments are due October twenty ninth. Uh, winter sand, we've been slow but steady, we're both buildings about halfway full um, right now, but. No reason to think it won't be ready for winter when winter finally arrives. And in the next uh, between now and the next board meeting, we're going to commence with some brush removal alongside Moody Mountain Road. And some spot brush removal alongside Young Town Road. Not the whole length of either, but. Where the brushes encroaching the roads. That's all I have to report besides what's on the agenda.
Be any questions for David?
One question for me is the rubber cam still up and running?
Uh, wasn't this morning.
Okay, we got a few days out of it.
We got a few days out of it and I reached out to uh, our IT people and had. Okay, make it go, because I don't know what's to go, what's going, we're not going, but.
Follow up question, yeah.
Good follow on that, David, David.
Yes.
See the camera, did we ever hear that? I may have asked you this before, uh, from Miles were about. That their town wanted to have a feed. From our camera about on the parking situation. There was inquiries in Ireland at one point.
There were been numerous.
Yeah.
Public inquiries and I referred them all back to the. Board over there to see if it want to be down because we weren't, the board here wasn't interested in private. Things and nothing official.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, moving ahead, meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here at the town office unless announced otherwise, the comprehensive plan review committee is scheduled to meet Wednesday, October first, six P M. Lincolnville Central School Committee is scheduled to meet Monday, October sixth, six P M at the Lincolnville Central School. The planning board is scheduled to meet Wednesday, October eighth, six P M. Conservation Commission is scheduled to meet Thursday, October ninth, four P M. The town office will be closed in observance of e- either or both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day on Monday, October thirteenth. And the next select board meeting will be Tuesday, October fourteenth at six P M.
And are there any upcoming newly events? Hearing none, we'll move forward to the minutes. We have two sets, start with the ones for September thirteenth.
I moved that the board approved the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five meeting minutes as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
I just want to point out, there's, I think, one typo in the year for the public hearing, but. It's pretty obvious.
It's. What time?
Yeah. Today's public hearing, row one sixty-six.
Okay.
It says September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Uh, yep.
I would also note, uh, in line, um, thirty eight. September two hundred and forty-fourth is probably a pretty hard.
Yes.
Long day from now, but.
Can I amend that motion to include the uh, corrections made just now?
Absolutely.
In a second.
Yes. Okay, any further discussion on that? Saying then, all favorite. Thank you. And then we have just your simple second set for the twenty-fourth.
Moving to board approved the September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes as presented.
Now a second.
All in favor?
I'm just gonna stay because it was.
Thank you. Next up, we have our presentation from the Conservation Commission and the Howl Point Project Department.
Good evening, Will Brown, Lincolnville. Dave Perkins, Lincolnville too, and Sheila Bolson, Lincolnville. Um, just a, an update, we've been. Working um. On a potential parking area, possibly, at the. The end of Duck Trap Road or Egress. Directly across where N D O D had used that area as a staging area back a number of years ago when they rebuilt the Duck Trap Bridge. Uh, at this point, that piece of land, which is outlined in yellow. Includes the spit. The Duck Trap Spit and um. The town is uh, is in a lease with the state on that piece of land. And that lease follows through for another, I think, three years. And then there's a possibility for an extension of five years and we'll talk more about the lease later on, but. There's been a lot of pressure on the spit over the course of the, especially the past few years since COVID during COVID. And then uh, basically because people were parking and using pretty much the entirety of the spit for parking, there were a lot of times down there when. It was just a big parking area sticking in the water. And um. And then the storms came along in, in January, December, January, I guess, of twenty uh, three. And um, they. Took the spit and basically widened it by sixteen feet. And um, with the storm surge and also lowered it a bit. But the whole backside of it that faces the harbor is uh. Somewhat unstable because it's just rough cobble that's been deposited there over the go, the course of those stones, storms. But people are using it now and in fact, it's a wider parking area than it was before, so there's a. Can be more cars there if it was a particular day. We uh, have been feeling for a while that there's a couple of concerns about the situation down there. Since we're the stewards for it on the lease and I'll read a little bit about what the lease has said. In terms of that stewardship. Um, there's been, uh, we think there's a, a real liability issue for the town. If something happened over there where a car backed down over the edge, which is now a much steeper edge on the harbor side. Or if uh, in moving cars around, somebody got hit. Person got hit, kid, whatever. Um, the town's going to be called in on that very quickly. So we've been trying to think about ways that we might. Not cut off parking down there, but limit parking in some way in the sense of providing an alternative parking area up near Route One. And you'll notice the red dotted line. We've uh. Looked at the area where a parking, a small parking area might be. And um, roughed out a footpath. That's good right there for the time being, yeah. Um, roughed out a path to go down that would empty out just on the uh, the west side of the spit. Um, it's about fifteen hundred feet long. It's uh, not a difficult trail to walk, not that steep. Except for at the very end, when you get down towards the water, the last section. Uh, there would certainly need to be some um, some steps put in. To zigzag back and forth a couple of times to get down to the, to the bottom. Uh, we had looked, the first two yellow tags there, the tax. We had looked to see if there was an alternative way to go from the first yellow. Tag, the second, oh, here. To have a little, a little shorter trail, but have decided since that it would not be a great spot, there's a lot of deadfall in there. And it would require quite a bit of work, be a lot easier just to take a little bow around. There's one spot where there would need to be a bridge about eight or ten feet long. Um, that you can see the location for that, well, eight to twelve feet long span. It could be built. Uh, let's see. Sure. Sure. We'd originally thought about a possibility of say a sixty by sixty foot area. For a parking area and uh. Dave can mention this too, I guess, that, but he had talked with Dan Ford about. Ideas of what would it cost for about a sixty by sixty area? And I think he came in with something between eighteen and twenty-five thousand. Now in. Since I've been down here walking the area and mowing the area a little bit too, so it is, is walkable and, and viewable pretty easily now. Um, the footprint could easily be sixty by ninety, which would uh, take care of uh, eight to twelve cars. Could park safely in there and have enough room with a center aisle for backing around. Uh, you, you have to go to the map, I guess, at this point. Yeah. But there's nothing tying us to either the sixty by ninety or the sixty by sixty at this point. Uh, and I was thinking of the, the footprint, yeah. I just is, I just sketched it out. On some graph paper, allowing for twelve foot wide, if you look at the upper rectangle up there, twelve by twenty-two for a vehicle area. Uh, the guidelines that I was seeing on the internet, um. That was plenty of an allowance and I remember when we went down there one time, we measured Paul Sampson's pickup truck and there's a large one and it was. Close to twenty feet long. So there's adequate room for vehicles of that size. And that's one, two, three, four, five, I think, that goes down to eight and it comes up here with a few on this end. And then this larger area in that center aisle. Is, I don't remember what, here, I can look right here.
Twenty-six.
Huh?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you. Yeah, center aisle is twenty-six wide. Uh, so there's, there's ample room down the middle for backing out and turning to either come in or go out. But this would deal, this sixty by ninety would deal with between eight and twelve cars and then the trail would egress off of that, the bottom end of the city here. And head off into the woods to go down to the uh. To go down to the spit. We met with uh. Maine DOT back last year. And asked about um. What we would need to do to have uh, an egress driveway to come off of Route One and of course, we've. Looked at sightlines, what kind of sightlines you'd have at the crest of that road either way. And he said, uh, don't remember his name. He said, there's some bushes up in here, I know that out there that just needed to be trimmed a little bit back, so you'd have a better sightline coming out onto Route One. Um, and. I believe he spoke about, you ought to have the, you ought to have it laying at least twelve feet wide. But I went and I checked what the uh, the pavement, the footprint is on the Duck Trap Road itself and it's sixteen foot wide. And I think on the scale of the other drawing, I basically allowed for sixteen, sixteen foot wide driveway to get in there and to get out of here. So people needed to pass each other that it would be possible. I guess that's about it. For the uh. For the slideshow, I did include a set of photographs in there, I don't know if you want me to put them up there or not. They, I felt they were important and since we're going to the public with this. That it probably would be a good idea to scroll over to that one if you could do that for the photograph. Oh, really?
I don't think they're wrong here, Will.
Oh.
They have them.
They had, right, select board has them. Well, just for the public description of this whole thing, uh. One of the photographs was a picture of the Duck Trap Spit during the storms in January twenty-three where the uh, storm surge was totally over, over the spit. Um. The other one was a picture of a, an eighteen wheeler. That had gone down there and um, was delivering goods to a ferry, uh, a shallow draft ferry that would go out to the islands. Of uh, one was timbers and there was one that had, there was a stone, stone delivery too. Now, if you can imagine that space. Um, perhaps, well, we don't need to go back to the other photograph, but uh, um. There's no such thing as a three-point turn for an eighteen wheeler on Duck Trap Spit, it's really an eighteen point turn at the very least and we've got a series of photographs showing that. Everything, uh. The disruption to the, to the footprint of the spit in those, those kinds of turns uh, is apparent. The other thing is that the ferry itself is running. And there's discharge and that discharge is going back into the harbor. And it's running all the time because the, they need the crane to unload the, unload the goods off the, the flatbed and onto the, onto the fair, onto the ferry. Um. It's a. It seems like it's a. I don't think it's an illegal usage of the spit to do that, I've, it's not seen anything about that. But it certainly goes against the uh. Some of the principles that are in the lease and I'll read that one little thing. Our proposal is aligned with the town's long-term lease agreement with the state of Maine. Our lease with the state says that the town will, quote, develop, maintain and manage the Duck Trap Project, meaning the spit. Uh. For public conservation, recreation and or educational programs and. Unquote, and another quote, the use of these premises is in the public interest and is consistent with the management objectives of the Bureau of Parks and Lands. So it seems to me that the intention of this project itself. To provide some alternative parking and a trail down, a walking trail down is uh, in line with what the state would like to. See how the state might like to see that place used while we have a lease there. And I guess I'm gonna turn to you, Dave, and Sheila, time.
Good evening, my name's Dave Perkins, um. To be clear, what we're asking from the select board tonight. We're asking for you to give us the green light, to submit a plan to the state. To allow us to proceed with this trail and parking area. We're not asking for money. Um, or anything else, we're gonna try to fundraise, get grants and we'll see how that goes. Um, and as Will mentioned, the lease, um. Is almost a forever lease. We have the right as the town to extend it for five years and keep going and going and going and going, so that's nice. If, if you're, if we're making improvements, we have to go to the state to get there, okay? So, uh, what we've been talking with uh, David Kenny about, if you are um, supportive of taking this to the next stage. We would develop a um, plan and a letter to the state to be signed by the town administrator or. The, the chair, whichever you elect. And get it up to them so we can make sure that. Putting a trail on a pretty simple parking lot in this area is going to be okay with the state, we. Think that they will appreciate it because it lines right up with what the lease talks about, we'll just talked about recreation, conservation, education. And if we can do this, it's a lovely trail. Um, the trail we intend to um, create it with volunteer labor. Um. We do think we want to look for some expertise as a fellow. Uh, that Kristen Parrish has been talking to who does the trails um, with the Camden uh, State Park. We do want to get him involved to, we've already kind of have a walking space. Uh, that we've kind of trampled down, but we want to bring him in. Yet his um. Expertise, because at the end, it's a little bit steep and this probably needs some trails or something to control the, the part down towards the beach. Uh, we have two or three thousand dollars already from years ago that we raised. That we will need to work with Dave to. Work with you to get the green light to use, but we want to use those funds on some of that planning and also this fellow could get out and, and actually be out there with us. Um, giving us um. Some uh. Higher level direction than we'd have ourselves, the area where we want to put the parking lot is already flat. Um, I think DOT years ago may have used that for um. Whatever they used, as Will mentioned, we've spoken to Dan Forte, says it's, we could have a very basic gravel parking area there, we're not. Talking about this being open, uh. You know. Winter or having an outhouse or having lights or anything, it'll be. A pretty low-key parking area with a lovely trail, uh, and we hope that that takes some pressure off of the spit. And so again, what we're looking for from you is, can we go forward? And ask the state to approve our plan? And if you say yes, then we'll work with uh, Dave to put that together and get it up to the state. Do you want to talk about this?
Um, yeah, thanks for having us, just to say that our intention is to raise the funds to um, support the project. I, we know that um, any, and through grants, that those applications, that process would need to ultimately come from you, but. We would offer to help with the research, find grants that were uh, fitting, appropriate and the writing too, if that's something that you would welcome, um, we've done some. Uh, initial exploring, we think that there are definitely some good possibilities with the state, maybe even some private foundations, um, so, yeah.
So I guess that would be about it.
Excellent, thank you very, very much, questions for the committee from the board?
Well, but more for David, just in terms of the municipalities role. You know, are we obligated to, you know, bring in a Gartley Dorsey-like entity to plan the parking lot or, you know, I. I get into all of the, you, you mentioned lighting and I love the, the sentiment of having, you know, just kind of a low-key area where you just relieve some of that. Pressure on that tiny little piece of land down there and the poor folks. Um, but you know, my head can't help but go to, you know, signage, lighting, accessibility, you know, all of those. Things that we find ourselves obliged to think about in other areas, so I'm just wondering, you know.
We had, we have reached out to Will, thinking some of the same thoughts that you, so we're. We, we, we get what you're saying and that's gonna be part of our work.
Okay.
And we'll, and we'll work with Dave to make sure we're not missing it, but we, we, we get what you're saying.
Yeah, 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 so I just wonder, you know, where the, we, we have, you know, where's that Venn diagram?
Well, the, the lease agreement is. Fairly silent on. Don't take this offensive in any way, the professionalism of the design or improvement. But they reserve the right to approve or reject whatever we propose, so. Um, if it was Dave Kenny's on the back of a napkin, that might be less likely to be approved than. A full-blown set of design plans, but that might be overkill. And we may be in a happy medium somewhere with, with what the Conservation Commission has done and I think I would. Probably look to submit what we have. And see if they say, no, we need more. Or we don't like the concept at all, but thus far, the concept has been pretty universally blessed.
And Will's firm surveyed these lands and he, he's aware of it, so.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have like hire and we could just kind of like, hey buddy, make sure we're not, you know, getting off the wrong direction here.
Other questions?
Um, so. The ones, well, I have two things actually, um, one is. I would still love to see some sort of sanitation facility there if we're providing for parking and hiking. Um. It just seems like there's going to be trash and if we don't have some sort of, um. You know, like, like what they have in Acadia, maybe, you know, the ones that are the composting toilet sort of thing or anyway, um. But also because it abuts the Coastal Mountain Land Trust land. I, I noticed that this was prepared by Jack from Coastal Mountains Land Trust, so. Can I assume that you've talked with them about the possibility of, of maybe more of a loop trail where it also included. Going on Coastal Mountain Land Trust land?
Yes, we did, we, we did talk with Jack about that initially and um. Well, part of it is that it creates a much larger trail, a much longer trail. And the terrain in this area. There's a number of severe gullies in there that would have to be dealt with, either with bridges, um. Anyway, construction wise, it would be much more complex. To go that, to go that way.
I guess I'm not really understanding that, I've, the Coastal Mountains is mostly a meadow, so there's not a lot of gullies.
It's not here, what the darker areas are.
Right.
On the screen, that's wooded areas and coming through here. To get down, if we went on Coastal Mountains land, we'd have a much harder terrain to deal with.
Okay, I guess what I was picturing was that it was more of a, a loop that was down near the ocean and then it came up. Like the other perimeter where it's mostly meadow, not gullies and a lot of challenging trail development, but.
So we did meet with Jack and Dave came out with us and we walked their land and our land. And he helped us lay this out. Uh, they, um, when they do a process, it's multiple years out. So they're multi-years out from doing anything and their, their land was a little disappointing, it didn't support the, the trail, so we decided to keep it simple.
Okay.
And do this. And do this. It doesn't mean that there couldn't be a larger trail over time working with them. And they're very supportive. They're very eager to hear. They want to see this happen. They see the potential, but it didn't seem like it could all happen at one time.
Okay. And and when you mentioned grants, you're, I'm assuming you're thinking main trails program, because that's such a great grant opportunity. Yeah, that started this year. Well, the one that's seven and a half million a year. Oh, right, sorry, you're not. The, the one the legislature did last year that was funding seven and a half million towards three types of trails, motorized, non-motorized, and mixed use over the next ten years, um, ninety-ten match. I went to a thing about it back in June because I was, I wanted to know what our options were for trails in town, and it sounds like a really excellent program where we'd be able to fund, you know, a lot of stuff, and they value all that volunteer effort at, you know, thirty-two dollars an hour, which is fantastic, as far as coming up with, you know, our match. Um, which could be in kind, but so as far as the town, you know, having to spend money, there wouldn't necessarily be an outlay from us.
Yeah, so that would be definitely something to pursue.
But I was just wondering if you were thinking, if if, you know, we move forward with this, would you be looking at doing something to fund it for, say, you know, the next round of that next fall?
Oh.
Or, or, or were you trying to get it done this?
Work on that, yeah.
Yeah, we did, Will had an outhouse space on his plan. And we, you know, kind of went back and forth on it and we just didn't decide to do it yet. So if you guys love outhouses, we can get an outhouse.
Well, it's funny you should say that, because that is my underlying concern. Who's going to police it? Who's going to make sure someone's not in there and get off? Our, so to speak, you know, that type of thing. I know we have town places that have uh, porta-potties and things of that nature. We don't have a place that's kind of out of the way like Al Point is. You know, and it looks like this would be up, the parking lot would be up closer to the road, and I would assume uh, some type of arrest area would be somewhere close to the parking lot. But how is it going to be managed? Is that kind of, are you looking for that? Is the thought to have that fall on the town in the start here? You know, a maintenance manager for the town? Is it, you know, what do we, what is the concept for them? Or have you even, have you even got that thought?
We've talked about it. We haven't, we kind of wanted to find out what you guys thought. Um, we recognize the thing that you just said, which is, you don't want access at all hours of the day, all year. You want to keep, you know, teenagers out of there and all that type of stuff. I think over the long term, that, you know, the town should control the gate and if there's um, an a- an outhouse, then or the latrine. I assume there's some type of service that can be hired to deal with those, but we we haven't figured out those details yet. We were trying to keep it as simple as possible.
Yeah.
But we recognize you have to keep it safe and control it and all those things as well. So we're kind of a work in process on those issues.
We do, we do currently have a porta potty at Duck Trap and trash pickup. And to varying degrees, most of the time it's very successful, and when it's not, we, we're, we're pretty well informed, but it's when we're falling down.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, two questions, I guess. There's one is, I can't remember, but what's going to keep people from parking on the spit already? They can just go down the road. Will there be the gate? Or there will be a sign that says you all might want to park up on? I mean.
There'll be signage for that.
Okay, signs, but there, but there, there, there won't be a gate at the end of that road. Preventing, okay. Okay, then that leads me to the second question, which has to do with access. Um, that would take care of accessibility to the ADA, right? That's, there's even drive there, but you're also aware through the main trails program that they give preference to ADA accessible trails. Serious Mountain was applied for one, for seventeen hundred feet on their trails. If you're looking at sixteen hundred, might be the way you might want to go. Look at that, look at their application. But there's, there's nothing other than signage to try to encourage people to park there and walk down. Yeah, we, we saw this as um, a first step, positive step. We didn't want to be the guy that showed up and said, you can't go down the spit.
I, no, I, I totally get that.
But we wanted to try to change people's behavior by having a positive choice. The other thing before we forget, um, this Saturday, ten o'clock, we're gonna be out there to show you where the trail would be if you support it, and also to have people from town come out. Um, we'll, we'll park, park along Route One. There's pretty good parking right where Will's laid this out, and then we'll uh, walk down the trail down to the spit. Ten o'clock this Saturday.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, well, I had wanted to ask about the gate too, um, because I just don't see how I don't see how we're gonna keep eighteen-wheelers out of there if we don't have a gate, frankly, but.
Yeah, and it's my understanding, um, was it the DMR that came, we had a conversation about this because we had some folks upset about that and also um, usage of driving out on flats, and it was made very clear to us that we should not pursue impeding anyone's ability to access the low tide zone. In any way, so, gates, gates, barriers, anything like that, because it's public. It, it's um, yeah, that would be, that would be a non-starter.
So they're okay with eighteen-wheelers being down there and barges pulling up?
Well, it's not the desired vehicle to be down in there. We all know that, but there are people that aren't gonna try it. We've already, we've got a picture of it right there.
Yeah.
But we, like Lately said, we, we had a conversation with an official conversation and strongly suggested that we do not pursue any type of blocking.
Yeah.
Um, for any reason.
Yeah, and as you said, well, you know, the language is, you know, there's, there's nothing from the state or from the town perspective that.
Excellent. I have a question for you, um, in those, in that conversation, they learned that they're uh, what it was, that they're not wanting to have any kind of a gate. Is that to a gate for an entry point, or was that any kind of blockage of the spit itself?
Any, any kind of block?
Any kind, so even partial to, to uh, keep people off of the end of the spit.
Yeah, we had been We, we've been floating the idea of like, what if we placed big large boulders, and that was yeah, that was frowned upon massively.
I just have to ask you guys, because you met with the state, because it, it just seems like the right hand not knowing the left hand at the state, since the, the lease specifically says conservation, recreation, or educational purpose. And using it commercially to load barges doesn't seem to at all fit into that, and not impeding access in any way seems like it's counter to their own restriction to educational and conservation.
Except you read and continue on in that paragraph that talks about the right of the public to use the property for purposes of recreation and shore access shall not be restricted.
Right. Get it, get into that public access piece of the mean low water line and that being
We act, we actually had legislation submitted on our behalf uh, by the former state rep for the area, and um, I think he was pretty well beaten up in committee hearings from people about accessing the not only here, but obviously if it applies here, it applies from York to Eastport or wherever. And uh, the Down East contingent was, I believe, very vocal at that hearing.
So it comes down to how you define shore access, like shore access means anything, not just personal use. Commercial use.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, the, the initial concern wasn't necessarily about the eighteen-wailer. May have predated this, actually, but we used to have people on the real low-draining tides that would drive pickup trucks. Halfway to Alsboro, that's an exaggeration, but they were a long way out there. And because they, I don't know what they were harvesting, some sort of shellfish, and they didn't want to carry them, and it was like, can't we not have vehicles going up and down? Oh, boy. That was currently got Mr. Bigler way to careful.
I have, I have a few things. One, thank you very, very much for the, the, the work you've been doing, keeping this going forward. You know, you're not trying to do it in one minute. You're trying to take sixty to get it done, and it's, it's showing. Um, uh, interfacing with uh, Eric Brooks, um, is a great plan, idea to have him involved uh, in that. I wish you, us luck in behavior modification. Um, I know for a fact, I mean, it's a, it's a, per- personally, when there's two cars down there, it's great. I've, it's, it's been twenty cars down there, and it's an abysmal place to be. Because it's just, it's just no pack to, to forget people, if we get the vehicles out of there somehow. Um, there was some way to entice them to be up in that upper lot and experience the walk down. It would be so much better. Um, so see where we can go there. From a process standpoint, in my opinion, I don't think we need really approve anything for you tonight. It's more of, we love what you're doing. Prepare your plan, work with David, et cetera. Get on the agenda and bring the plan you want to send off to the state to us at that point. That would be when we'd have a motion to approve, to forward that on to the state.
This is good work. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to throw my hat in the ring in, in terms of advocating for at least trash, if not a bathroom facility of, not a bathroom facility, that's too grandiose, but a porta potty or a, or an outhouse is, people are people are people are people, and sometimes the walk from, yeah, that it's, I feel like it would be worth considering and have to second what Steve said, you know, you clearly put a lot of thought, and I really appreciate the approach that you're taking. I think it's really representative of, of the care and consideration. Yeah, thank you.
Sure, yeah, one other, one other thought that I wanted to add is the wonder about in terms of, of a gate or closing off anything, if uh, if there might not be a a separation there in the sense of not thinking about that in terms of the duck trap spit, where we obviously, we've been through that conversation before. But perhaps dealing with the parking lot as a seasonal parking lot, and where you could not have a porta potty in the winter and have a, have a gate or a couple of boulders popped up at the end of that access. The access road onto Route One, so that that would help discourage people at least from driving into that area. Be, be the seasonal parking lot.
Kind of what we do at Penobscot Park.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. Item seven and eight are both Republican, which are scheduled for seven thirty, so we will bypass those and come back as we approach closer to the seven thirty time. The next item, uh, lately has requested a workshop of the planned.
Yeah. I, I just think that we had gotten in a habit of having workshops with all of our committees, commissions, and boards. Um, kind of fell out of that practice, and I feel like with all of the exciting work that's going on with the Conference of Plan Review Committee. And, you know, based on your updates you've been giving the board, it sounds like you know, there's some real momentum going, and so it makes sense, me, have the board check in with the committee and see how it's going, see, you know, if we could get examples of, um, I don't know, things that are close to being done, done. I don't, you know, any content, just so we can kind of get a feel of where, where things are and how it's all going.
Cool. Yeah, no, I, I agree. It makes heck a lot of sense. I, I definitely support that. It also begs the question. Uh, something we talked about before, having to do with uh, select board members actually required to be liaisons. And always bringing back information or being the goat or providing information, however you want, the two-way street person. Uh, to each committee that town, the town has. Steve, I know you're kind of doing that now, and I appreciate you spending the time. It always turns out, comes out, turned out to be a matter of time. How much time are, are we able to put in? You know, I totally get that. Uh, but anyway, it's something we might want to have a conversation separately from this workshop down.
I think we should. I think it, I think it should happen sooner than later.
Yeah.
I know we say that about a lot of stuff, but this is, this is pretty important. It's been going on for a while. We've rotated, rotated through a couple of phases of this, and, and I think we need to we need to sit down.
Cool.
Have a, have a conversation.
Well, entertain a motion.
Yeah, I moved that the board instruct the town administrator to coordinate with the Conference of Plan Review Committee a workshop meeting between the committee and the select boards for status update and check in on any issues and progress.
Any other discussion? Anything? Excellent. Thank you very much. The next item is to discuss the results of the vote we just had at our town meeting regarding the land purchase, uh, in the K-Rod.
Uh, yeah, uh, so follow-up for anybody that wasn't there. I think everybody that was here was there. Uh, we had about thirty-six people there, um, motion carried with uh, one person expressing opposition to it. Uh, the next, um, next thing to do, we just schedule a closing and, um, pay our money, and then we'll get a deed and we'll record the deed and we'll be done. And then the quest begs the question of, do you want this to be done by a designated member of the select board, or you want to designate me to do it on your behalf and keep moving? That's what we've done in the past, but past practice doesn't always dictate what you'd like in the future, so.
I'll look for a motion. I move that the board authorize and direct the town administrator to accept delivery of the deed from the Lincolnville Sewer District and to execute any and all necessary paperwork reasonably incidented to the land purchase between the town and Lincolnville Sewer District authorized by Article Two of the September twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five special town meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any, the following discussion?
I feel like I read somewhere, don't, aren't we up against a deadline though, that it had to happen by the thirtieth, or was that just? So this needs to happen tomorrow. Okay, let's make sure.
Our purchase and sale expires tomorrow.
Right.
Uh, the district's attorney and our attorney have been swapping drafts and paperwork back and forth. Um, I think we can compel it to occur tomorrow, but it isn't necessarily required because the district still wants to move forward, but we're still aiming for a closing tomorrow. Subject to lawyers.
Excellent. No other discussion? Well, Taylor? Excellent.
We'll stay on, be here and move on to select person updates lately.
Wish, wish I had something lengthy to talk about. I don't know, ten minutes or so, but I, I don't. I have nothing, I'm sorry.
But I regret to inform you that I am not a thing.
I'll try to drag this out then, yeah.
You got it?
Just wait, just wait until another five minutes. Yeah, yeah, uh, shit, it's, it's that time of year, right? Firewood time and want to let you all know, let the town know that the wood shed, the wood shed, the Lincolnville depot. Add assault sand shed is up, is ready, supply firewood to people through the Walden County Woodshed. So we've got about five cords in there. Out of the way, locked up, et cetera. So I'll put away and we've got volunteers lined up to distribute the wood. And so we're good to go. So let people know that, um, they need to call three, three, eight, two, six, nine, two. Schedule an appointment and appointment is necessary to pick up the wood. And you'll be directed to one of eight depots in the area. And maybe Lincolnville one, uh, where there will be some volunteers helping you put a quarter floor in your vehicle. And we'll do that until we run out. And hopefully we can get that on the website at some point before snowfalls.
Yes, is that the, do you know if that's the same number? Could you repeat that number?
You know, it's, I got it from their website.
Okay, it's the same number as.
Three, three, eight, two, six, nine, two. I don't know if that's the same number or not.
Well, I'll verify before we post that to the website.
I have a question for you, which I will ask very slow.
I was gonna say, can we draw this out?
Yes. Um, you said you made some comment like as long as it lasts. So can people make donations of wood? I mean, maybe not right now if it's full, but as time.
That, that, that's actually kind of a, a, a sticking point with the current Walder Woodshed operations. Because, uh, I mean, we distributed two hundred and eleven cords last year, a limited volunteer base. Small season, short season, more or less, and it's just a lot more efficient. When you're talking that scale. What we do is we do fundraising, buy wood from local loggers, tree landers, process it ourselves. Going out with that limited volunteer base, trying to pick up donations. This is not a good use of our time. It just doesn't make sense, scale wise. And so. Somebody drops a tree and I wish they could get rid of firewood and donate, you know, somebody really needs it. That's great, but odds are, you give us a call, but odds are we won't be able to do it simply because we don't have the time.
Okay.
Yeah, but give us a call because we might. I mean, I just helped, uh, pick up a few cords last week. So we're always benefit rules. And comments, but it's hard to say no to people, right?
Okay. I do have an update. Talking slow. The Walder County Budget Committee, yay, um, are, they actually had a meeting. Last week, I was on an airplane, um, I think. And, uh, but more importantly, our actual budget committee meetings. Where we're meeting with department heads and talking in detail about every aspect of the county budget starts. On October fourth, which I believe is this Saturday at nine o'clock. Some kind of a nine to three meeting, October fourth, and then we have a six o'clock meeting. Next Thursday, we from Thursday on the ninth, and then another nine AM most of the day meeting on the twenty-fifth of October. And hopefully November first will be when we will have the, uh. I don't want to lie and say it's the public hearings, but it may not be the public hearing, but it will at least be the sort of final. Budget presentation of the budget committee. So the public hearing. Probably would then be after that by the, whatever the required timeframe is, so. Should be done by mid-November for the budget. And no, right now I have no clue, um, other than the very initial meeting that we had a month or so ago. When they were saying that, um, we are probably looking at. A raise in the budget this year of somewhere between five and ten percent. Mostly because of. Um, I'm not sure what word I want. It's a misunderstanding of. You know, what happened previously related to self-funding of the health insurance. They, they. They need a big infusion into the reserve for the employee health insurance. It's been kind of underfunded. Again, they, they weren't purposefully trying, you know, they thought they were in good shape, turned out they're, so. Um, they. That could be a bulk, a, a large component of the increase this year.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, but, uh, that, is it safe to say that with that healthcare? With, with the, with the insurance gap or whatever you want to call it. It's, it's not to the magnitude of like, say, Washington counties budget problem. I mean, that, that spares don't have to be that.
No, no, and it's more of a. You know, it's a good place to work. They have a lot of people that have worked for the county now for a long time, which is a. Bad thing from health insurance perspective because they've got an aging workforce that's starting to have more. Yeah, um.
But, but, but it's not, it's not. A fail, a failure, success, yeah, big failure.
No.
Okay, that's all. Thanks.
I have a couple updates, um. First of all, regarding the Lincolnville Central School Facilities Committee, um. It's been a month or so of, of ad hoc meetings happening as, as most of you are aware regarding their. Uh, heating system plans, uh, that committee is starting up, uh. Monthly meetings on the first Monday of each month at five PM, um, right off here. And then the contractor leading the efforts for the boiler work, they're sending out a. Every Friday update, uh, as to the status and at this point. The boiler demo is complete and they were, all the boilers are out of there on nine twenty-two. The new ones were set in place the same day. Uh, the expansion tank, uh, was also brought in, uh, this piping that was happening this week. The indirect swap out is ten, ten, which is a staff only day. Uh, Ward Wells can be started in the excavation of the tank farm area of thirtieth. Uh, so tomorrow. Um, the trench for the LP lines will be the week of the seventh. And they'll immediately backfill that. All the LP tanks are already staged and ready to go in on the sixth. And on the thirteenth, they're removing the, uh, old oil tank, um. Which is a, uh, there's no kids on, no school that day. So they are moving very, very quickly, in a very orderly fashion and. Uh, the John Varney, who's the manager, the MC for this project, uh, he's. He seems to be very experienced and all over it.
Is the, um. So the pre-existing oil tank.
No. Very large. It was in those pictures of that Tinstan area back.
Is there a paramount product? If, if so, will we get credit for that or will the school?
Somehow, I believe there was a credit plan for it, but I don't.
Yeah, I, I was contacted by the principal. Uh, about that and he didn't know how much oil was in there, but they, if it's over a certain quantity, they will get credit. Cause he wanted to know if we could use it elsewhere and we didn't think that was necessarily the best thing since all our tanks are full and. So, but there is a credit plan that he was talking about where they get.
I'm just gonna say this out loud. How can you not know how much you got in the tank over there as a principal of the school? I don't need an answer, but I'm just. That's just me, sorry. Thank you, Steve. I don't have anything else there. Might as well do the. Trigger payroll awards.
I move that the board approve and sign the trigger and payroll one.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on those? See none, favor? Sorry.
Why are you saying sorry?
Well, because I suggested the seven. Not knowing how long the town meeting would go and how quickly people would get here and. What would be on the agenda, so.
But we can start passing around and signing, can't we?
Oh, yeah. And can I walk down to my office and get a few? Think I got a couple of other things that you can sign.
So, yeah, we did, we did talk slowly enough.
We did our best.
Yeah.
I threatened a five-minute break between each agenda.
The other one died.
Yeah, yeah.
Two.
Yeah.
David's going fetching.
That's more.
More. Put those over for you, it's a shame.
Well, the data I'm just gonna do is good little line.
The top two, you probably shouldn't sign until you pass your public hearing.
Yeah. So we have not doing.
Correct.
Yes, that's. And the town administrator question.
Uh, no.
On agenda item?
Absolutely.
David, um. In reading through the. Various questions and responses from the project manager for the parking. Area for the ferry, um. On a scale of zero to one, how satisfied were you in the response that you got from the project manager? For our lengthy and your thoughtful articulation of our concern.
I believe that the, um, project manager took all the comments. Provided by the town and by the citizenry, basically under advisement and. Did what it could, and that you does and didn't tell you a whole lot. And until, I mean, some of it was pretty straightforward. I mean, some of the questions about drainage and we now know. You know, they're looking for water to run across the parking lot by itself and through the grass and the ocean. And then McCarroll being collected, but, um, I think a number of. Items or issues raised, they haven't got to that level of detail yet. And so they, thank you for your comment. We take it under advisement, kinda.
So with the action taken by. The voters at our special town meeting tonight and then subsequently with the board's actions. Um, can we request a formal date to meet? Cause he, he did indicate that went through.
They'd like to see our plans.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, um, we certainly can request that. I wonder if we really want to. Make sure we have all our ducks in a row and we're all in agreement with what we're looking and proposing. I mean, we did, uh, the board did review. Three or four different, uh, conceptual plans that Pinnacle Hill Engineering had put together and. Had honed in on one of the concepts being more preferable. Uh, we might want to have more, some more discussions with. Um, currently Dorsky about the permitability of those options. Knowing what we know now with the beach discussion of the cobble. Whatever, the environmental restrictions, um. But sure, I don't think it would hurt to get on their radar to say, yep, we've, we've closed. Or, well, we're in the process that voters have approved the purchase. Uh, we're looking to close or maybe we will have closed by the time we get around to sending in that message. And we'd like to certainly continue the discussions because, you know, no sense of building a sidewalk. And then for us to come along and ask DOT if we could remove the sidewalk they just built.
Yeah.
Why don't we just? Tell them what we'd like to do or show them what we'd like to do. Say, how can we make this work with your plans so that whatever you do, we're not asking to remove? People are always complaining about, you know, oh, they just paved the road, now they're banging it up, right? You know, how about, how about we avoid that? So I will, I will, uh, convey to Orell. Um. Guess I'll wait to see if we actually do have a closing tomorrow or if it's somehow postponed a little bit. But if it's gonna be postponed for long, I'll say the voters have approved it. Now we're just waiting for all the lawyers. And if we have a closing, I'll say not only the voters approved that, well, we closed and we now own it and we'd like to. Really hone in on that design.
Cool.
Hopefully I caught a, um. Got the spirit, if not the intent, exact, close, pretty close with the comments. Um, we did get a comment, um, from. A resident of the area who was appreciative of the comments the board made regarding lighting. And how they didn't really want to, you know, and the fact that we flagged for DOT that it was in a residential area and we didn't want it to look in. Industrial and.
Well, yeah, well, one thing about the lighting that you might want in future discussions. If we have a woods DOT, we might want to pin them down on is because. They said they were gonna follow the recommendations of LD. Whatever, LD nineteen thirty-four and, uh, but that, that's, that's still, that hasn't been turned into law.
Right.
And so it may not be a requirement on their part to follow that. So we're gonna have to make sure that, that that's in their rules or that it is law. One of the two, so that, that's still up in the air. Whether they're gonna follow the recommendations nineteen thirty-four. We should know that three days after the legislature starts. Legislature starts in January. That's when the governor has to either sign it or veto it.
Steve, I have a question.
Yes.
But David, I think, or maybe you, I don't know, um. Non-agenda item, but in our packet, in Tab A, the Conference of Planning Board Committee Meeting Minutes. Submitted July eighth.
Yeah.
How often are they meeting?
It's a monthly meeting now. Uh, there is a set, uh. I just got it set on Friday, Saturday. That didn't make this packet.
Okay, alright, so. Thank you.
That, that set was late because they were taken by a dog. Um, and not one of the regular meeting members. Sandy Haller is the, uh, ticker, yeah, takes the minutes twenty years. He wasn't in the tent last meeting. We've got it posted. Yes, it does.
Yep.
Uh, I, so our next item on the agenda is to discuss winter road closings. Um, so we have to move into the public hearing for, for a motion.
Uh, I move to close a public hearing concerning the possible. Oh, no, I moved to open a public hearing concerning the Witcher Road closing of Martin Corner Road. For so, to Title twenty-three, section twenty-nine fifty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? And we are now in public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak? See none?
The possible winter road closing of the Martin Corner Road.
Second.
All in favor? Excellent. So now we can entertain a motion regarding the closing of Martin Corner Road.
I move that following a public hearing pursuant to Title twenty-three MRSA paragraph twenty-nine fifty-three. Two, and due deliberation, it is the opinion of the municipal officers of the town of Lincolnville. That the Martin Corner Road from one seventy-one Martin Corner Road to its end at Moody Mountain Road. Is so located with reference to population use and travel thereon. That it is unnecessary to keep it maintained and open for travel during the months of November, December, January, February, March and April.
Checking.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. And item number eight is another public hearing. Uh, regarding the general assistance ordinance for a motion to go into public here.
I move to open a public hearing concerning the general assistance ordinance, including appendices A through I.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? We are now at a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Seeing none?
I move to close public hearing, second.
All in favor? Excellent. So. Unless there's other items of issue in it, I would look for a motion regarding general assistance ordinance. I move that the board adopted two thousand twenty-five general assistance ordinance and dependencies A through I with an effective date of October first. Two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any additional discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor? Excellent. That concludes our agenda. We have one more motion to make.
Move to adjourn, second.
All in favor? Thank you all.